Good evening and welcome to the Coon Rapids City Council meeting for Tuesday, April 5th, 2022. If you could please rise and join us for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please call the roll.
Councilmember Grisgoviac.
Here.
Councilmember Ray Rower. Councilmember Hernandez Jr.
Here.
Councilmember Geisler.
Here.
Councilmember Johnson.
Here.
Councilmember Carlson.
Here.
Mayor Cook.
Here.
One absent Ray Rower.
Thank you. Next is to adopt this evening's agenda.
So moved.
Motion by Geisler, second by Carlson. Is there any corrections or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, and the agenda is adopted. And we are on to item one, which is always an awesome fun experience. And we're going to turn this over to Chief Wise for the swearing in of a new police officer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council, city staff, citizens. I'm sure you're noticing that I'm wearing my extra special uniform today. This is what we refer to as my dress uniform. I'd have decided to wear the dress uniform because not only is it a special night for Officer Jack Johnson, it's also a special night for me personally. Since June 2011, when I was appointed police chief, this will be my 43rd badge pinning in front of you. Since I'm retiring in June, it'll also be my last, so I'm a little humbled by it all. I would like, of course, to take a few minutes, though, to introduce our newest police officer. He graduates from our field training program. Of course, it's part of our tradition to do this in front of the city council. Prior to 2011, the officers took their oath, or swore their oath, in front of an Anoka County District Court judge. But since 2011, we decided that it's more important for the officers to take their oaths in front of you and in front of the citizens that they serve. The symbolism is really important to us. It's a solemn oath that they're meant to take. So tonight, I'm introducing Officer Jack Johnson. Jack was born and raised in Coon Rapids. He is a Coon Rapids High School graduate, much like myself and several of you. He earned a Bachelor of Arts in Criminology and Criminal Justice from Hamlin University, where he regularly appeared on their dean's list. He took his skills portion at Hennepin Technical College. Interestingly with Jack, we at CRPD have essentially watched him grow up. He came to our police department as an explorer in high school, and we've talked before about our explorer program and that we want to mentor young people into the profession. Jack is one of those success stories. Jack excelled as an explorer. He then transitioned to become a volunteer reserve officer. Again, our reserve officer unit is very important to this community. Many hundreds of volunteer hours were done by Jack personally, but as that unit as a whole donates quite a bit to our community. He then became a paid community service officer, which, again, I've also told you many times in the past, is a really challenging job. On its face, it doesn't seem like it, but it's a lot of work, a lot of stress, a lot of pressure for these young people, and we get to see them perform at their best in that regard. Meanwhile, when he wasn't busy enough, he was also a special deputy with the Anoka County Sheriff's Office. Meanwhile, he had to work real jobs to pay his bills in the private sector, and I wanted to highlight a couple of things that his former coworkers described him as. This is part of his background packet. Jack was described as trustworthy, hardworking, dedicated, with a healthy work-life balance. Sounds like exactly the kind of officer that we're looking for. So we are happy to have Jack transition from community service officer to be a licensed police officer for our city. Jack's first day as a trainee was November 2021. Since that time, he has been trained and evaluated on a daily basis, pushed to excel at meeting the needs of our community, something we refer to as doing things the Coon Rapids way. Our training program is designed to be extremely stressful, to be certain that we've hired the right people, and in Jack, of course, we believe we have hired the right person, which leads us to where we are now. So Jack, tonight, you're officially graduating from our field training program. Symbolically, we've removed your trainee badge, as you've now earned your permanent badge of number 183. So my badge, and interestingly, the last badge I'm going to pin on an officer in our city, 183, is exactly 100 numbers greater than my own. My badge number is 83. And if you didn't know this already, the numbers that the officers are assigned, they're unique, they're never reassigned to anybody else, and their badge numbers mean a lot to them. Mine means a lot to me, and this one will mean a lot to Jack. So first, Jack, this badge symbolizes the faith that all these people in the back row have in you. It also symbolizes the faith I have in you to carry out your duties as a police officer. But secondly, and most importantly, never forget, this badge belongs to the citizens of Coon Rapids, and they're entrusting you with it. It's a sacred bond, and I don't want you to ever forget that. So you have become a member of our proud organization of dedicated professionals some time ago. We're now expanding your responsibilities that you're ready for, and I know you're happy to do that. On behalf of the department, I want to welcome you into the brother and sisterhood of this agency performing this function, and I expect that you're going to serve our community in ways that'll make us all proud. So with that, tonight, Jack is going to be pinned by his mother, Chris, but prior to that, his niece, Brooklyn, is going to pass the badge off to her grandmother.
Didn't you guys have some success in Wilmer with your explorer team? It seems like, didn't, it seems like we had a, an award or something for you, when you were at Explorers.
Down in Rochester?
Rochester, is that where it was?
Yeah.
Okay.
It was him.
Yeah. I thought so.
He was a really good explorer.
All right. If you would raise your right hand and repeat after me.
Aye, Jack Johnson.
Aye, Jack Johnson.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
And the Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
And discharge faithfully.
And discharge faithfully.
The duties of a police officer.
The duties of a police officer.
For the city of Coon Rapids.
For the city of Coon Rapids.
In the county of Anoka.
In the county of Anoka.
And the state of Minnesota.
And the state of Minnesota.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
To the best of my judgment and abilities.
Then there were four, huh?
Yeah. That's right. Yeah.
I just wish means would drop.
Yeah, for those of you at home, we just had a mass exodus. We just went from a full house to four. The four that are left are very important. Thank you for staying.
And then there were four.
And then there were four, that's right. All right, next on our agenda is, oh, a Fair Housing Month, Fair Housing Month proclamation. And let me just get this pulled up here. April is Fair Housing Month to commemorate the Fair Housing Act, which was enacted as part of the Civil Rights Act of 1968, and the Fair Housing Act outlaws discrimination in housing on the basis of race, color, creed, national origin, sex, familial status, and disability. During the last five-plus decades, the Fair Housing Act has facilitated equal opportunities in housing to the residents of the city of Coon Rapids. So proclamation, whereas, the Fair Housing Act enacted on April 11th, 1968, enshrined into federal law the goal of eliminating racial segregation and ending housing discrimination in the United States, and whereas, the Fair Housing Act prohibits discrimination in housing on the basis of race, color, religion, sex, familial status, national origin, and disability, and commits recipients of federal funding to affirmatively further fair housing for all, and whereas, Coon Rapids is committed to the mission and intent of Congress to provide fair and equal housing opportunities for all, and whereas, our social fabric, the economy, health, and environment are strengthened in diverse, inclusive communities, and whereas, the success of the Fair Housing Act comes from a commitment by all of us to address discrimination and support equal housing opportunities for all. Now, therefore, I, Jerry Cook, Mayor of the city of Coon Rapids, on behalf of the Coon Rapids City Council, hereby proclaim the month of April 2022 to be Fair Housing Month in the city of Coon Rapids, proclaimed this fifth day of April 2022. So, yeah, very important. All right, next on our agenda is to approve the minutes from the March 22nd meeting.
Mayor.
Councilmember Grisgoviac.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of March 22.
I'll second.
Motion by Grisgoviac, second by Hernandez Jr. Is there any discussion or corrections? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, and that motion carries. Those minutes are approved. And we are on to item four, and we actually have one, two, three, four, five, six items on our consent agenda this evening. The first one is to adopt Resolution 22-54, a joint powers agreement for BCA access. The city attorney's office has had electronic access to the Bureau of Criminal Apprehension, right? Is that what that is?
Yep.
Yes. To the, to the BCA's criminal justice data network and other network systems for several years. The current agreement with the state of Minnesota is expiring, and the state is now requesting that the city enter into a new joint powers agreement and a new amendment to the criminal justice data network, CJDN. Subscriber agreement to have continued access to the BCA's criminal justice data network, which includes the e-charging and e-citation system. The attached resolution has been prepared, naming the city attorney and the police chief as the authorized representatives for these agreements, and giving authority to the city manager and mayor to sign the joint powers agreement on behalf of the city. So that we'll be taking, we'll be looking to adopt Resolution 22-54, approving the state of Minnesota joint powers agreement for BCA access, and authorizing the mayor and city manager to execute the BCA joint powers agreement and amendment to the CJDN subscriber agreement. Next item on our consent agenda, which is actually item five on this evening's agenda, is to adopt Resolution 22-48, approving sustainability commission appointments. Eve Comerford, Rob Davis, and Christopher Ray submitted applications for the sustainability commission. After discussion with the applicants, the sustainability commission recommended Eve Comerford be appointed to fill the vacancy with a term ending December of 2024, and that Rob Davis and Christopher Ray be appointed to the commission to fill the vacancies with terms expiring December 31st, 2023. So we're looking to adopt Resolution 22-48, appointing Eve Comerford, Rob Davis, and Christopher Ray to the sustainability commission. Next item on our consent agenda, which is item six, is to accept a right-of-entry agreement with Lariat Companies Incorporated. At the November 18th, 2021 Planning Commission meeting, Lariat Companies Incorporated received conditional site plan approval for construction of a nine-bay, 13,900-square-foot business incubator building known as Coon Rapids Tech Center. The right-of-entry agreement allows the city to periodically enter the property to exercise hydrants and valves and flush the water main system. The utility and drainage system within the site are considered private, and the property owner will continue to own and maintain these items. This right-of-entry agreement simply provides the city the ability to ensure appropriate public safety. So we're looking to accept the attached right-of-entry agreement with Lariat Companies Incorporated for a proposed 13,900-square-foot multi-tenant building to be located at 11670 Eagle Street Northwest, Coon Rapids. Next item on our consent agenda, which is item four of six, not to be confused that it's actually item seven on our agenda, to approve a partial deferral of SAC fees agreement for Walzer Hyundai 2075 Gateway Drive. The city has received and approved construction plans for Walzer Hyundai, which includes a water reclaim system for their car wash bay. Walzer Hyundai has submitted for a deferral of the sewer availability charge, the SAC, through the Metropolitan Council. In order to receive this deferral, the Metropolitan Council requires the city to enter into an agreement with the property owner. The agreement is attached to this memorandum for review, and we're looking to approve the partial deferral of SAC fees agreement with Walzer Hyundai. Next item on our consent agenda, which is item eight, we're looking to adopt Resolution 22-53, establishing polling locations for 2022. Following a redistricting, the city council must re-designate polling places. Even if no changes were made, in the event of an emergency or if a polling place becomes unavailable, there are provisions within the law to allow the city council to designate an alternative polling location. The precinct mapped with the polling locations listed in Resolution 2253 are both in our packets this evening, so we're looking to adopt Resolution 2253, a resolution re-establishing polling locations for 2022. And item six of six on our consent agenda, which is item nine on the agenda, is to adopt Resolution 22-56, accepting Twin Cities Gateway 2022 Member City Grant Agreement. The city participates in a regional convention and visitors bureau known as Twin Cities Gateway and receives an annual community member grant. The grant is based on the local option lodging taxes collected by the city and other member cities, and the city of Coon Rapids will be receiving $21,115 from the 2022 Member City Marketing Grant. So we're looking to approve the 2022 Member City Marketing Grant Agreement and adopt Resolution 2256, accepting the 2022 Member City Marketing Grant in the amount of $21,115. And that's our full consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move the consent agenda.
Councilmember Geisler, thank you.
Second.
This is motion by Geisler, second by Johnson. All that silence was really throwing me off. Is there any questions or discussion on the consent agenda?
Mayor, I have a question on the consent agenda.
Councilmember Grisgoviac.
Agenda item number seven, the partial deferral of a SAC fee paid to the Met Council. I was wondering, does the city have a financial stake in that partial deferral on those fees paid to the Met Council 61 units versus 20? I'm just wondering, does the city have to pick up the difference on that?
Mr. Greford.
Mayor, Councilmember Grisgoviac, no, the city does not have any stake in that particular item. The deferred assessment, or excuse me, the deferred SAC fees will, would be paid by the property owner if they stop using the reclaim system, which is what is the basis for the deferral.
Okay. That makes sense. That's the only question I had.
Any other questions or discussion on the consent agenda? Hearing none, we have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, and that is adopted. We're up to item 10, which is to consider Resolution 22-49, reallocating the 2021 general fund budget and amending the 2021 and 2022 budgets. Ms. Hanson, would you like me to read the discussion here, or would you like to cover it?
I can give a brief description here. So there's two items included in this resolution. The first is to reallocate appropriations within the general fund to ensure that each activity does not exceed its budgeted amount. So this, these adjustments are a net zero. They don't increase or decrease the overall expenditures. The other item would be, there's a list of mostly capital purchases that we're requesting be carried for, carried forward to the 2022 budget. A lot of these items had, we had anticipated would be completed by the end of the year, and thus were not included in the 2022 budget. A lot of them experienced delays in the supply chain, either, you know, unable to get part, unable to get them, it's taking longer to produce, or there was some other delay. So we're asking for these items to be carried forward and amended to the 22 budget.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions on that or need further information?
Mr. Mayor, I do have a question on that.
Councilmember Grisgoviac.
Were any of the capital improvement projects actually canceled? Are they all basically moving forward into 2022?
From what I, the information that I have, most of them are still in, they're still in process. None of them are canceled. There's just that the time to complete them has been delayed and expanded, so they're all just moving forward.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Geisler.
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution 22-49, reallocating the 2021 general fund budget and amending the 2021 and 2022 budgets.
Second.
Motion by Geisler, second by Grisgoviac. Is there any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I think it's just fair to let everybody know, this is financial housekeeping that we do every year, just to make sure that, you know, if, within a department, there's money in this pot and this pot, and we need to level the pot, it's, it's just a housekeeping that we do every year. It's nothing nefarious or anything going on here and there. It's just making sure all of the books add to zero all the places. So it's, it's a common thing, and you'd see it again next year, and if you look, you would see it last year.
It did sound more technical when she described it. It sounds like we keep our money in pots. I'm a little concerned about that.
Those, those virtual, electronic accounts.
It's a good way to visualize.
Mr. Stemwell.
Mayor, council, as Ms. Hanson mentioned, a lot of these were due to delays in supply chain or production. For example, the fire truck that we ordered in the fall of 2020, I know the fire department visited manufacturer today, and we should receive that in a couple of weeks, and that was a big piece of this. There was 1.5 million or 1.3 for Highway 610, which were funds received through the state that, you know, will be moving on this year. So some big chunks like that, that are a little unusual compared to other years, where maybe those things weren't such a problem, but these things are still in the queue and will get completed.
Very good. We have a motion and a second on this. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, and that motion carries. And item 11 is to consider Resolution 22-50, kind of a similar vein, authorizing the transfer of funds. And Ms. Hanson, did you, do you want to hit the highlights again?
Sure. Yeah, before you is a list of transfers related to the 2021 financials. I want to point out that the large transfers out from the general fund are more than what you've previously seen. At the end of 2020, we had kept a good chunk of CARESAC money in the general fund, and we ended up with an unassigned fund balance of about 56% of our 2021 expenditures. Our fund balance policy is to keep 45%, so we kind of kept that in there as kind of more of a contingency. Moving forward, we're trying to revert back to that policy, so that's why you see a larger transfer out, that all these funds are coming from that reserve balance. Also, the calculation for this access does not include the American Rescue Plan Act dollars that the city received. That will remain in the general fund and will be a part of the upcoming budget discussions.
Your honor.
Councilmember Johnson.
I'll move adoption of Resolution 22-50, authorizing the transfer of the funds described in the agenda.
Second.
Motion by Johnson, second by Carlson. Is there a discussion on this?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Grisgoviac.
I would just like to point out, like I've done in the past, that the one thing that stands out on this one for me is not the larger numbers than normal, because we know why. It's the general fund of the compensated absence fund, in $334,000. I've said this before, it seems like that fund is growing and growing, and that's a huge liability for our city. So I would like to see us maybe try to do something that gets our employees to use their sick time versus carrying it as a liability like we are doing. It's just growing and growing, and I know it's going to become a heavier liability in the future. So why don't we get it out there, as I always do?
It's important to be consistent. Right. All right, so we have a motion and a second. Do we have further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, and that motion carries. Item 12 is to consider a lot split, 3750 Coon Rapids Boulevard. Is this, did you want to do a dog and pony on this, or should I just read it?
I can, if, if you would like, Mayor.
Does anybody need to see additional information on this split? I'm hearing nothing, so.
No. It's the corner of Coon Rapids Boulevard and Round Lake Boulevard.
Yeah, it's a pretty straightforward split, and it looks like there's kind of a natural line there, and you've got everything worked out, so, for shared access, so. The applicant proposes subdividing the existing 102,168-square-foot lot into two lots, and it's basically making each office building its own parcel. The planning commission recommended approval of the lot split at its March 17th meeting, and no one spoke at the public hearing, and it seems pretty straightforward. Is that an introduction? I guess we need a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Geisler.
I will make a motion to adopt Resolution 22-51, approving the proposed lot split with four stated conditions. One, all engineering comments are addressed. Two, a five-foot-wide drainage and utility easement is proposed along both sides of the new interior lot line between the two proposed lots. Point three, provide a trail and snow storage easement for the portion of the existing public trail located on proposed parcel A. And four, provide a, provide the city a copy of the cross-access agreement between parcels A and B.
I'll second that.
Motion by Geisler and a second by Johnson. Is there any further discussion or questions on this?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Grisgoviac.
The cross-access agreement between parcel A and B, is that necessary because there won't be enough parking on either one of the lots going forward, or is that, we're not creating a non-conformity in the?
No.
I thought it was because there's only one act, one entrance, one ingress, negress off of Round Lake.
One access and a shared parking lot.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, and that motion carries. Item 13 is to consider Planning Case 22-8, consider preliminary and final plat, Golden Corral redevelopment. How does it get to be the Golden Corral? It was old country buffet forever. It was only Golden Corral for like a year.
That was its most recent iteration.
Consider preliminary and final plat, Golden Corral redevelopment, 3580 Main Street. Basically, we're looking to knock that building down and build a couple of buildings in its place and have three separate businesses there. Is that kind of the highlight there?
Mr. Mayor, that's correct. It is to subdivide the parcel into two lots, so they'll be with two separate buildings and, I believe, a total of three tenants. So the existing building will be scraped, removed from the site, and then it'll be, it'll be redeveloped into new, new retail. The site plan for this item was approved conditionally at the last planning commission meeting as well, so this is a necessary action in order for that development to go forward.
I just take this as such a good sign that they're willing to knock down fairly new buildings and build other buildings, that that land is still very valuable there.
Absolutely, yes. That's, that's a good point. Mr. Mayor, I just might point out, there's one typo that was brought to my attention before the meeting, so the resolution that is attached to approval of the preliminary and final plat includes a city clerk certification for a different resolution, so we can fix that, but I just wanted to point that out in case anyone may have noticed that, so.
Sorry. Didn't. All right. Anybody have any questions on this, or anybody want to move it forward?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Carlson.
I make a motion to adopt Resolution 22-52, granting preliminary and final plat approval with the following conditions. Number one, all engineering comments be addressed. Number two, all Anoka County Highway Department comments are addressed. Three, the applicant entering to easement agreements with the city. Three, the applicant entering to easement agreements with the city for city-maintained landscaping along Main Street, and if necessary, the existing public sidewalk. And number four, provide a copy of shared access and cross-access agreements for staff review.
Second.
Motion by Carlson, and a second by Grischoviac. Is there any further discussion on this?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Carlson.
Prior to this, I had heard a lot of citizens, a lot of concerns about that building, and, you know, the, just the way it was looking, and I know there are a lot of citizens who are happy to see something change over there.
Yeah, yeah, we gave it our best shot. After Old Country Buffet went out, and I would call that leasing, that leasing agent and go, what about Golden Corral? You know, and they finally got one, and then it didn't make it, so it shows you what I know. All right. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries. Item 14 is to consider joint powers agreement with Anoka County for traffic signal improvements at Blackfoot Street and Coon Rapids Boulevard, Project 21. Oh, wait, that's what those guys were here for. Okay, we lost two of our four. Consider joint powers agreement with Anoka County for traffic signal improvements at Blackfoot Street and Coon Rapids Boulevard, Project 21-32. Mr. Hammer, you want to hit the highlights, or you want me to read your discussion here?
I can take it, Mr. Mayor. This is an Anoka County project, federally funded, safety enhancements. They'll be replacing the traffic signal on Coon Rapids Boulevard at Blackfoot Street, kind of one of the entrances to Mercy. The south leg of that is private. There are some improvements needed down there. We've been coordinating with Mercy on having those done as well. It's a great deal here for the city, getting new traffic signal. I think the, the cost to us after federal funds is about $29,000. Anoka County will run the project, they're responsible for all the work. We just get to reap our federal funds and get a new traffic signal along Coon Rapids Boulevard, so I'm happy to answer any questions anyone may have.
Are these currently some of the blue ones that we're, are we getting rid of now?
I don't think this one is a blue one, but we've made that decision that going forward, it's their new standard, which is supposed to be the stainless steel or the aluminum. Galvanized, that's correct. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Geisler.
One other question. You know, I know a lot of times when the county is upgrading signals, they're putting in the flashing yellow arrows, you know, to be able to allow a left turn. Do you know if that's going to be included as a functionality at this signal?
Councilmember Geisler, yes, there will be flashing yellow. That's kind of the new standard for them. However, I will say that they don't typically turn it on day one. They like to monitor traffic for a while to make sure that it's not going to go in the opposite direction, and want to make sure it's safe before they turn it on fully functional.
Great, thank you so much.
I can't say, I'm not terribly impressed with their new cycling on those. The, the new lights at Hanson and Coon Rapids Boulevard, sometimes you get the left turn arrow at the beginning of the cycle, and sometimes you get it at the, at the end of the cycle. You know, you, you kind of like to know when you should be ready to go, and all of a sudden it goes green, and you go, oh, whoa, how did I get that already? Or, or more typically, you're there for another four minutes, but anyway.
They do that to keep you on your toes.
Is that what it is?
Yeah.
Yeah. Just keeps me on my horn if I'm not the first one in line.
We like them. I like them. Oh, yeah. Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Grischoviac.
I have a question for, for Mr. Hammer. On these federal funds, can you tell me where are they actually coming from, and could they be used anywhere else in the city of Coon Rapids?
Councilmember Grischoviac, the federal funds were applied for by Anoka County, so they're health, safety improvements. So, it's, it's a grant, it's a solicitation that's done on, I believe it's every other year basis.
So, the funds are, they were granted to Anoka County to be used in Coon Rapids?
Solely for this project. So, you submit the project, they evaluate, score it based upon the improvements, and then they dedicate funds solely for that project. It's not just a lump of funds you decide what to do with. It's project-specific.
Okay. I wanted to make sure that these funds were, and when it wasn't clear in the packet, that these federal funds were Coon Rapids, or are they Anoka County's? But it sounds like they're Anoka County's, federal funds, we're using them in the city of Coon Rapids, which is great.
Yes. It, it's, Anoka County did the application. They've, they've done it many times along Coon Rapids Boulevard and elsewhere in the community. So, they, they find old outdated signal systems that need ADA enhancements, and they make those applications. So, a lot of the signal enhancements that have occurred over the past seven, eight years have been as a result of their application. The dollar amount gets split based upon the type of improvement. So, if there was water main, for example, as part of this, it wouldn't be federal fund eligible. If they impact something that's ours as a result of the project, and it's not an upgrade, then that is eligible. So, it, it's really based upon the type of improvement and the specific items that have to be eligible.
Thanks, I appreciate that. I know that we're getting, you know, a great improvement here for a pretty low cost to the city. But I was looking in the JPA, in that agreement, and it shows that the city of Coon Rapids pays for 100% of the signal. And I was wondering, why is that written that way if it's a county road that the county is needing to maintain? Is it?
Yeah, Councilmember Grischoviac, I'm going to have to look at that, but the way the responsibility breaks down is they're responsible for their legs, and we're responsible for ours, being that the south leg is a private leg that also falls on the side of the city, so technically we should be responsible for three-quarters of this cost. It, well, I'm sorry, 50% of the cost. It used to be we would pay for all of our legs and half of theirs, but that changed recently, I believe, as their standard cost share. That it's, we're responsible for our legs that go into it, and they're responsible for theirs. So, if it said 100% city costs, I'm going to have to go back and, and correct that because it's, regardless, it's still the reimbursable expenditures, whether it's on their side or on our side, and we get a pro-rata share.
It is 50% of the cost for the signals, but I think maintenance is where the 100% comes in.
And we're responsible 100% for the EVP system. That's for our emergency preemption. So, the city is always responsible for that under all these signal agreements.
And 100% responsible for all luminaire maintenance, and 100% responsible for all the ongoing supply of electrical power.
Yes, we supply the power, we change the light bulbs, and we take care of the EVP system.
Luminaire sounds so much more high-tech than light bulb.
They're fancy light bulbs.
All the more reason to get that federal money.
So, it's coming out of your left pocket instead of your right pocket?
That's right.
Or bucket.
Or bucket, yeah.
Or pot.
All right. Well, does somebody think enough of this? Do they want to move forward?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the execution of the joint power agreement with Anoka County to reconstruct the signal on County State Aid Highway 1, Coon Rapids Boulevard at Blackfoot Street.
Second.
Motion by Geisler, second by Johnson. Is there further discussion?
Mr. Mayor, just one more question.
Councilmember Grischoviac.
In, in the packet, it says those federal funds, they're kind of like pending based on the acceptance of the application, but it sounds like that application has already been accepted, so it's kind of a sure thing, those funds?
Yes, Councilmember Grischoviac, we won't advance unless that is the case, but this has to determine the relationship we have with the county, then the county has to execute an agreement with MinDOT in order to receive those funds. It's, it's a process.
Okay. As long as, yeah, we don't move forward without it. Okay.
They actually need our JPA to move forward with their part of it.
Correct.
Gotcha.
All right. Any other discussion on this? We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries. Item 15 is to consider letter of engagement for geotechnical evaluation and regulated materials, City Project 18-14. Mr. Hammer, this is for soil borings down there at Highway 610 and East River Road?
That's correct, Mr. Mayor. I'll try to make this one a little simpler.
You're doing fine.
The only reason we're here tonight is because it exceeds Mr. Stemwettle's authority to approve. It, it's part of the Highway 10, or 610, East River Road interchange project. It's covered under our state bonding request for final design. We've been holding off on this until we have a preferred alternative. It didn't make sense to go do a bunch of testing and geotechnical work when we had multiple iterations, so now we have that preferred alternative. We're ready to move forward with this, and so this is just to get us to the point of doing those borings. We've also got to do some testing on the bridges, because there's some bridge widening, just to make sure there's no regulated materials. So, I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Very good. Any questions for Mr. Hammer on this?
Your Honor.
Councilmember Johnson.
I'll move approval of the letter of engagement from Braun InterTech for field testing services related to the Highway 610 and East River Road project.
I'll second.
Motion by Johnson, second by Hernandez Jr. Is there further discussion on this? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries. Item 16 is to consider Resolution 22-55, approving a 2022 regional solicitation grant application. Do you want to, Mr. Hammer, is this you again?
Certainly, Mr. Mayor, briefly. We are, the city is gearing up to submit an application April 15th for regional solicitations for the construction of Highway 610 and East River Road interchange. This will potentially fund a portion of that project, so we're currently working with Anoka County and our, our design team to get this completed, and this was one item that we needed from the city council. We'll also get letters of support from MinDOT, Metro Transit, and Anoka County to finish off that package.
Absolutely. All right. Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Hernandez Jr.
I would like to motion to adopt Resolution Number 22-55, approving the application for roadway expansion grant through the Metropolitan Council's 2022 Regional Solicitation Program to the Transportation Advisory Board.
Second.
Motion by Hernandez Jr., second by Grischoviac. Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries. And we are on to open mic public comment. Is anybody here to address counsel during open mic? Any of our last two? All right, and we'll move on to, and I don't have any reports on previous open mics, so we are up to other business. So, we've received some complaints on the tracks down there by Hanson, that now that we've got that really nice overpass over Hanson, the railroad is using it to park trains and wait for them to get into the yard, which means stopping, you've got the squeaking brakes, you've got the couplers, and then when they stop, then the engines sit there and idle behind the houses, and then when they take off, then you've got the couplers taking up the slack again. So, I know that Chief Piper was checking with Burlington Northern on it, and I stopped down there last night and sat in the cul-de-sac just as the train was stopping. It was like the guy's mom was riding with him. I mean, it was this perfect, smooth little landing, and one little brake squeak, and it was done, and I went, yeah, you guys are starting to watch out, I think. But if they were all like that, I don't think there would be a problem. But I just wanted to throw that out there, and, because I know Councilmember Hernandez Jr., and Councilmember Carlson, and probably others here have been hearing about it.
Yeah, I actually stopped down there after the first set of emails, and I just got out, and I just took it all in, just to, okay, just kind of the same, the same outcome, so it was just, yeah.
Some of us that have been around for a while used to spend a lot of time in that neighborhood when it was a dog park, going, oh, boy, how do we close this thing?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Geisler.
And to that end, you know, I'm starting to get calls about Saturday night driving up and down the Boulevard. Cruises not city-sponsored kind of activity, and I think it's fabulous if people want to come out and see the old cars and the fancy cars come up and down, as long as they're good law-abiding drivers, you know? And so, we're, we'll, I'm sure Chief Wise and his team will be out making sure, but hopefully we can stop the revving and the loud noises. But when it's one person in one intersection, we can't always be everywhere, but please know that we will have folks out there watching on Saturday nights.
That's right.
And, and it would be nice if they all drove like that train driver, just riding with their mom, you know? Because I, people love looking at the cool cars, as long as they're not driving.
It could be such a cool event if they just cooled it.
Right.
You know?
Yeah, yeah. So.
All right.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Carlson.
Just want to give a quick shout-out to the residents and surrounding community members who came out for the March 24 ACBC food drive-by. It was awesome. You know, with all the negativity that you see out there, man, it's just heartwarming to see all that kindness and generosity. It was a great day.
Yep, absolutely.
I would like, I would like to just dovetail on that. I was out there for a bit. I had to come and go and pick up the kids from school during it, but to see people from the community drive in with these beaming faces and say, can you help me? I've got a full load in the back of the van, and then you open up the back of the van, and they really do have a full load. I mean, it was just, it was heartwarming. It really was.
I think there's two things, and maybe Mr. Stemwettle will touch on them. We have the Alphlin Park redevelopment coming up on the 11th, and if people want to give more details on that, and the golf course is open. Probably not today in the rain, probably not the best golfing day, but the golf course is open, if you want to.
Sure. Mayor Council, yes, I'll try to do my best Tim Anderson impression. If I fail at that, you know, he's got great enthusiasm for Bunker Hills, and he's excited at the opportunity to open the course. Championship course opened on the 1st. The executive course in driving age had opened prior to that. All indications are the course will wake up from winter in pretty good condition. That's something golf course superintendents worry about nightly during January, get those deep freezes, but we feel like we're, the course is in good shape. We are squeezing rounds in between snowfalls and rains and inclement weather, but we're expecting a great season. The demand is there. The high school teams are practicing. It's fun to see all the activity at Bunker Hills, so we certainly encourage you to book a tee time and check that out as soon as you can. And yes, the Alphlin Open House will happen here at City Hall on Monday, April 11th, from 6:30 to 8:00 p.m. They're really trying to have some fun with this open house, kids, games, treats, and, and more, it even says on the flyer. This, you know, this is a really unique opportunity for the city to take a look at our oldest park that is in need of some redevelopment, and what that might look like for the next two to three years. And what's interesting about this one is it's kind of a Blake canvas. When you look at it and step back and decide, there's a lot of space there, it's configured a little bit oddly, and so there are a lot of things to work around, but the area has such high potential, and they really could take a unique approach to this park. So, we're really open to all ideas at this point. We're working with a great consultant to help us get out there and reach to the public and find out what they're most interested in. So, encourage folks to check it out, either at the open house, provide their feedback through whatever means they feel like. There's a special website dedicated to this public input process and redevelopment. You can find that on our city website.
All right.
And, and more stuff? There's, there's so much on the city website that you can find great information, right? So, this summer, we're going to start with music programs for kids, and you can sign up for music programs, and read all about that on our city website. And sports programs. And if you don't want to play, you want to work, we have positions open with the city, you know, especially, you know, for that, the seasonal recreational position. So, if you're an older kid that maybe doesn't want to participate but want to help the other kids, check out, check it out and put in your application. So, lots of great things on our website.
So, everybody's mailbox should have the city newsletter probably this week, I would[1737.73]